Yeah.
Yes.
I have a question for you. Uh, garlic robe.
Yep.
Mr. Benton.
Yeah.
Uh, I talked, talked with him a little bit this morning.
Okay.
He says they did a great job of the planted trees and the robe he gets through as well.
Okay.
And he's happy to use a rope to rappel over. He doesn't want the trees gone, he just wants them out of the wood.
Well, I could, I could, the inspector to figure out if we get an ecology inspection or where we can relocate them. Cause if we get an ecology inspection, we need to stay there and plant that stuff and then we can get rid of them. But I can see what.
Yeah, see what we can do.
Yeah.
The other issue, and I don't think it's a, he thinks when they were piled right in, they'd crack one of his windows.
Okay.
And he's, he's talked to the contractor about that and they're just saying it's not my problem. But.
Okay.
It's windowing, that'd be that expensive.
Especially because replacing paint.
Yeah.
Window painting, yeah. So, okay.
So maybe those two items keep you there.
Okay, I will write them down.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
He's been very prepared on us, he's, he's a nice man.
Yeah. He finally realized he's not too well.
Man, he did a great job and he says, I, I got to do paint from a water and some pure sweeter water than just having two small libers.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome to Wednesday Public Works. Am I just turning it over to you, Mike? Okay.
All right.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Oh, he wanted to go ahead and do a person.
I don't hear some less, just don't forget me. I can see it.
So good afternoon, before you guys get into the exciting budget information, I have one quick public works items. Um, we have a permanent right of way purchase and a temporary construction easement for our Allen, not Allen, Allender Road culvert number one replacement, so not the one that's currently out to bid, the one that is a 2026 project, um, that I'd like to request for the commission, the chairman to sign.
Okay. Where's this at?
This Allender Road up in, uh, the Ridgewood area. And this is the second project we have going up there. We have the project that's out for bid now, which is the Allender Road Bridge, which is, um, the highest load rated bridge in the county, so that one is going to be pulled out next year and replaced. This one is closer to town, um, but it is also load rated and restricted and we have money to, uh, replace this from the Bryan Abbott. So we're working on getting, we have one more set of easements, I believe, after this and finalize the design.
Okay. I'll be here with it.
All right, thank you.
Currently it's kind of a concrete culvert, right?
Yeah.
Is it replacing same same or?
No.
It'll be a different thing?
They don't like the center piers.
Yeah.
So. It's.
Hands from around them.
Yeah, yeah. Those obstruction stuff, I'm dead in the road, right in the middle of the stream.
Dub fish.
They just swim right into the piers. Yeah. What kind of water are they drinking before they hit there?
Must be a couple that brings too warm.
Yeah.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners, Mike Moss, uh, Public Services Director. Uh, we're doing a team effort today to talk about the twenty six, twenty twenty seven facilities budget. I see the packet in front of you, I'll also have a slideshow here for people online. Uh, first page in, we have just the org chart, we talked about this last week, we gave you a big org chart with everybody on it from Public Services. This just breaks down the facilities maintenance side. So you have the Public Services Director, the Deputy Director, but also then it goes to the Facilities Manager, Aaron Ostrand, who's in the crowd with us today, along with below that, uh, Accounting Specialist Two, Christine Miller, who's housed at, uh, Public Works Main Office, Facilities Lead Brian Shaw, and we have two project coordinators and then five technicians, so a good crew, uh, put together a little bit of time. They get a lot of stuff done around the county, um, nice to have zero turnover for a little bit there and get a good, good group. Working on a lot of work orders for us, so thanks, Aaron. Next slide, we have this little background on the operations on slide number three. Uh, their office, as you probably know, is located on the north of the Hall of Justice. Small little office there, a little shop next door, as I said, ten FTEs. Uh, they also serve thirty county buildings and over about a half a million square feet of space. So there, they spend a lot of time in HOJ and jail, but they also outlawing shops for Public Works, landfill, HHS, uh, this building, so they're, they're everywhere, but, um, they have shifts about on four tens, four nine and a half, sorry. They work Monday through Thursday and a few guys work Tuesday through Friday. So we have coverage five days a week, plus on call for the weekends. Sean will go over the expenditures, this is a general fund item or account, so he'll talk about the expenditures for twenty twenty six.
So as we have laid out on the slide, um, facilities maintenance is a general fund department. Um, our expenditures for the year are budgeted at three point one million dollars. Just shy of a million of that is labor and benefits. Uh, we have about a hundred and thirty seven thousand of supplies and then the big one is two million dollars of services. Uh, that's me between our utilities, insurance, repairs, um, and then janitorial, as we talked about yesterday, may or may not be on here anymore. So, um, utilities, you know, we have water, sewer, electricity to every building, kind of a half two item there. And then our insurance, uh, that covers all of our liabilities for all of our buildings. Any questions on these?
Well, actually, since you did bring it up, Sean, um, with the janitorial at the HOJ, do we kind of have a plan as to what that's gonna look like?
Uh, it's challenging the common areas, you know, behind the scenes, I think most departments be willing to clean their own area, their own bathroom, change, you know, take out their garbage, but there's a lot of common space, common area at HOJ, but also this facility here, who's cleaning the windows, who's cleaning the stairwells, who's cleaning, you have a lot of restrooms also at this facility here that the public uses, so that'd be the question for us, because, uh, it's probably going to go back to the maintenance side, unfortunately, because I think most departments will clean behind their own doors, but not in the common areas, and that's gonna be the challenge for our maintenance crew, is who does that fall upon, or do you know, or do we look at even a, a smaller janitorial contract? Do we just look at someone that's do the, the common areas and have a, you know, fifty, sixty thousand dollar contract compared to a, a two hundred and thirty four thousand dollar contract? We did go out to, did, got two bids in the last, uh, two weeks for companies to, to, uh, do all the, all the areas that we have currently under contract, uh, with the third party sealings. And they came in at, one was at three hundred and thirty three and the other one was at three eleven, three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So quite a bit more than what we're currently even paying, so I know it's gonna be a, a challenge to get through that on the general fund budget, but maybe there's a, a little lighter amount, like just do the common space areas, so someone will have to decide as a group before budget's finalized.
You may get a bid for it anyways.
Yeah, okay. And we're gonna reach out back to those two companies, they're fairly local southwest Washington companies that, see if they can just go to those common areas and get us a number that we can pencil in. And then everybody else just takes care of their own, own area and we'll work with our maintenance team to make sure they have all the supplies and buckets and regs and cleaners that they need for. and regs and cleaners that they need for their, their own area.
When we, this is an education for me here. When we put out an RFP for something like this, is there opportunity for negotiations? Like we can say, hey, we can't do that, but we can do this. Can do, can we negotiate that back and forth?
So these ones specifically are on state contract. So we have the ability to go in and say, hey, we're looking at this area this X many times a week. We're looking for these types of services, um, and we can work through that with those companies.
Well, I can see where the, behind the closed doors, I mean, most people take care of their own area. Somebody eating lunch and drops a bag of chips and they'll stop and clean it up. It might be a little embarrassed, but they'll take care of it. And if it happens once a week, you know, nobody runs a vacuum cleaner because there's not a big problem. And once a week it happens. But out in the common area, that's a everyday inspection that somebody's got to go and look at and take care of on an everyday basis. At the end of the day, it's got to be cleaned up.
Correct.
So.
And that's what the public sees. They don't see what's behind the doors.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's why I think maintenance will probably get called quite often. They'll see a mess in a certain area and say, hey, maintenance, I need you to clean. Like right now, uh, Aaron called our day porter before this being started because we noticed a lot of leaves in the entry, at least on the north side coming up the stairwell to make sure that gets cleaned up. Uh, that would probably, if we don't have any contract in place at all, I would assume that would probably be for, unfortunately falling on maintenance's shoulders to clean these common areas throughout the day, not just once a week or something, but probably especially in the winter months, probably almost daily. And with a half a million square feet to maintain throughout the county. And also, uh, we haven't got to yet, but landscaping, um, was on our, our list to take off to save the general funds some money for next year. So between the maintenance crew and hopefully the jail working crew, we will maintain our landscape around the county. So I don't know how much extra time they'll have also for the common space janitorial stuff. But we can certainly, if you guys are willing to get, get you pricing in the next week or two, hopefully maybe next week if we do a rush with these two companies, just to see what the common space would look like dollar wise.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We need a janitorial closet.
That, that's the other issue. Certain, certain departments, I don't think have that. There'll be a, a shared one in a common area, like a hallway will come out and get their bucket or their mop or their vacuum, you know?
Yeah, I gotta make sure I get a left-handed toilet brush.
We'll go special shopping this weekend.
Moving on to just a few projects, uh, project review from this last year, not all of them are on here, but some of the major ones. Um, slide six, those are a couple of pictures of, uh, the admin roof of this facility here. Uh, these are a couple before pictures and the next slide is what, I believe this contract was through Weather Guard. Uh, finishing up just a month or two ago.
Wow.
I think this was right around a four hundred thousand dollar project. Four fifty.
Looks like they did a good job. I guess we'll find out. Well, the rain started, so.
I know.
Well, no soon.
We'll know shortly, right?
Where did we end up with our broken window?
Do you want to try that one?
Savannah Clement, Public Works. Um, so we're doing some research on it. I have to gather my thoughts about where, uh, where we lift off of last. We wanted to pause until the spring because going to try to do the skylight replacement in the winter months. Um, and go, go kind of back to the drawing board with engineering and what we wanted to do. Um, but conveniently enough, we had a roofing specialist come out from Portland and he was walking with Jason and he was working on the Millig project. He's walking our roof on some of the patching that was done, um, at that project and we actually brought him over here to look at the skylight, skylight, excuse me, because they do the larger buildings in Portland that have that type of setup. And so he was actually going to work on trying to get us some pricing just to see, um, he was like, that's not going to be that hard, you know? Um, I guess more local companies don't necessarily want to honestly work on that kind of stuff. They don't have to. They don't necessarily have the expertise. So him coming in from Portland, um, he's going to give us some, some engineering tips and maybe get in touch with one of his people at his company to try to get something drawn up that we could look at this spring. So still in the same game plan as far as timing, but maybe we'll have a better opportunity to, um, and, and better options. So sorry, that was kind of a off the cuff, but that's what's going on actually, so.
Just looking at it from, under the bottom side, looking up at it, as shattered as that is, it's still holding together, obviously not leaking.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm wondering if we should, I don't know, coat it with a snow coat or something that'll, if we get a big hailstorm, God forbid.
Right. And, and I think we had talked about internally covering it, um, maybe even with like plywood or like a plexiglass, so it's still see-through. Um, the, the problem with, aside from the engineering and the weight is getting up there. So we have to build scaffolding, um, and we can't get any lifts that will fit in the elevator or that have the capacity to move up that many stories. So that was the other part of research we did, but we're working on getting some kind of safeguard safety measure in there. Um, probably, I think the last thing we talked about was being underneath of it, not over top of it. Is that, yeah. So you might see something here in the next few weeks to try to block it off a little bit.
Okay.
Not an easy one.
No, that's challenging one.
It's not.
Yeah.
Very expensive.
Is that, is that single pane? Is it like glazed in or? You know, is that a?
Double. It's double. It's double pane. Is it the top that's broke or the, it's the top pane that's broke, not the bottom one that?
Right.
Yeah. So, um, and I think we, when we pulled plans, and again, this is just off of memory, but I'm, I think that was the, the addition when the second, this addition was put on, I think the skylight itself was done in the, in the seventies. Yeah. So it's original to the seventies too.
Okay, thank you.
The next slide on number eight, uh, project you guys are well aware of, the north parking lot here at the admin building. Just a few pictures of lakeside. They worked a couple of different weekends grinding out that north lot. Um, regrading it to make sure we had good stormwater runoff. And then the slide after that is just a few after pictures when they're actually striping that and putting new curb stops down. Uh, still hoping in the next week or two, getting the lighting done in the north lot. And we did find a few other options this last week on planter boxes, looking at doing planters and possibly shrubbery or trees in the springtime, so. We do have a backup plan for some temporary lights if we don't get things done in time in that north lot. So we know daylight savings time is this weekend, which I know it's dark when they come in now, light when they leave, but that'll be reversed, uh, next week.
It's lighting, you're waiting on Kelso for?
Uh, no, it's actually, it's, we heard engineering, but I think it's more of the engineering from the, the side of the company we were using to put the lights up, not so much Kelso. They do require the engineering, but they haven't got all the paperwork to them yet.
Okay.
But it sounds like that'll be completed this week and then they can pour and then everything's in stock. They already have all the, the, the lights and the, um, light poles in stock at their shop. They're just waiting to get the approval from Kelso, get them in the air. But I think after we pour, we still have to wait five to seven days before we start working on it. So.
Yeah.
So if they pour next week, it'll be a week after that before our lights are probably in the air. Another project that we just did partially, we want to see how it worked. Plus we had a big hole. This is the HOJ ivy removal. This was on the northeast corner below the sheriff's office. The left-hand picture, of course, you can see all the ivy going up the side of the trees, uh, on the building, on the pole or the columns. The right-hand picture, we, uh, third party, uh, the same company that we've been using landscape around the county. Removed the ivy, did some spraying, but also there's a big hole below where the, it's hard to see, but behind two handicap or two signs there on the right-hand side below the sheriff's window was a big cavity, a big hole that people had dug into the side of the building there. Actually found some homeless person sleeping there years ago. So that's now been all filled in, um, put mulch on it. Uh, so it looks tons better. Um, it worked out well. The pricing wasn't that bad. So now we're going to go around the rest, the plan is to go around the rest of the building. Uh, we want to see exactly what we're up against doing this one corner. And we also know the north parking lot here at this facility has tons of ivy around the entire three, three sides of it. So. Um, this, this project here came in lower than we anticipated, this corner, it was like nine thousand dollar contract, but about half of that was to, uh, fill that hole in. And so it's only about four, four to five thousand dollars for the ivy removal. Uh, was, uh, this is the, uh, we Cougar Cottage Wazoo Roof. This is over the fairgrounds on the corner there where the new entrance is going to the Expo Event Center. The roof was in very bad shape. This is something we did this last summer also. And a couple of projects at the Hall of Justice. This is, uh, courtroom eight. The yellow carpet's no longer with us. Uh, they, we removed carpet, removed a lot of wallpaper from the walls and they repainted. Um, I don't know if there's any, was there any cubicles in this one too?
It was just that, um, you can see it, and actually it's in this hallway, so it might look familiar. And that's just a partition wall. That was all that was in there before and a conference table.
And some next slides also, the district corp of the hallway, once again on the left, you can see some of the brownish wallpaper that was removed. I think it's almost like a carpet wallpaper, similar to what we have in a lot of the rooms of this facility. Uh, new paint, new flooring. So those projects have been wrapped up over there. So. So some of the highlights of some of the projects we did around the county, um, I'm sure there's some other ones, but those are some of the major ones that we did that affects quite a few people's offices or common areas. So Sean's going to go over the capital reserve budget review real fast on how we get our funding.
So the capital reserve or our three ten oh one fund, um, is what we do of our capital projects out of. Uh, we've seen this on some Monday morning budget items in the past. Um, the main funding sources, of course, are going to be our real estate excise tax, our REIT dollars, as we call them. And that's a little over a million dollars a year. Um, we receive a general fund transfer of one million dollars annually on this. And then we have some interest income and then on the, uh, roof of the Hall of Justice, we do have two cell tower leases and we receive about seventy three thousand dollars annually from those leases. So I wanted to talk a little bit more on REIT itself and, uh, I don't know if the board has had a bunch of conversation on about REIT. Uh, we have a nice little handout. It might look familiar to you. We've seen these on Monday mornings in the past. Um, so there's two types of REIT. We have REIT one and REIT two. Um, being our type of county, we are only able to do REIT one. Um, they have different spending authorities previously. They were spending caps based upon, um, your fund balance, what type of, uh, activities you were doing on that. Um, and then in this year, uh, in, in, at the end of July, uh, House Bill seventeen ninety one went into effect. That removed a lot of our limitations around that. The spending authority between REIT one and REIT two are now the same. They can do the same activities. Uh, the cap for maintenance off of REIT dollars was raised from twenty five percent to thirty five percent. And then the million dollar annual cap on that was also removed. So if we do see a fund balance on this in the future, like we had in the past, we can use more of these dollars for maintenance type activities. And we don't have the same limitations on the type of projects we could use them on.
Any, any quick ideas on what the changes mean dollar wise?
Well, we're spending most of our money down on some Hall of Justice projects, mainly the HVAC. So as we build our balance for the future, when we need to do our next set of roof replacements, next set of, um, HVAC work and things like that, we may have more ability and more flexibility on how we spend that money.
Do you mind explaining like how the, how the changes affect, have affected us through current, like what that looks like?
Yeah. So in the past, we've maintained a fund balance in here of four million dollars, specifically for REIT dollars. Because we were only able to spend twenty five percent of our REIT dollars to do maintenance activities, uh, capping at one million dollars. So to really leverage our ability to do that maintenance on our buildings, we kept that value in. Uh, now that with that cap is removed, as we move forward, we'll be able to use more of that to continue maintenance on our buildings, not just, uh, capital planned items.
More of the four million? Okay.
And then we'll talk about that on our five-year plan on how you guys want to direct us to do that. Um, I want to give a little more detail on our.
So in the past, when we reached a million, they said that's it.
That's all we could spend on maintenance. Yep.
Well, it's all you could spend.
For maintenance.
It's not all we could receive.
Correct.
Correct.
So there's no changes in what we receive.
Correct.
You're just talking about the spending of the funds.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And how it made sense, oh, you have it. Okay. I see. How it made sense to me is like maintenance activities of larger repairs that weren't like a capital project that was planned. We were only able to spend up to a million and now we have the flexibility.
Yeah, I got it.
So on our REIT dollars, the handout with the graph on the bottom, uh, should look familiar. Like we said, we talked about this on previous, uh, budget review days. Um, we are seeing still some consistency across. We are still expecting about a million dollars annually. We do have highlighted this with those orange activities where we had some significant, um, excise tax come in, uh, either for sale of a, um, an industrial property or something of that nature. Um, we, we are not expecting to be back at the twenty twenty one levels of one point five, but more at the, the one million dollar level still.
What generates the REIT?
This is, uh, property transfers. So it's real estate excise tax. So when, um.
So when things are going well, like especially if it's commercially going well, then this really bumps.
Okay. Yeah, um, so we, we, oh, go ahead.
So the total you have for this year, that's so far, or is that what your expected total is after December?
That's year-to-date current.
Year-to-date current, okay.
As of yesterday.
So now, since we know some of the funding for our capital, it can move to the five-year capital plan, which is another large sheet you have in front of you there. We've got the twenty twenty five budget in there to see what, you guys to see what we planned on spending this year and what categories. And of course, we have the next five years budgets in there, which we will have discussion with you guys today. We try to break this down, like one through nine is our maintenance items we have in the facilities from HVAC, arborist, landscape, things that we've, we have every single year, um, equipment, um, contingencies. Ten, eleven and twelve are roof items. We try to lump those some, those together. Thirteen through sixteen are parking lots. Um, seventeen through twenty five is like miscellaneous. Twenty six through twenty eights, um, seismic and facade repairs. And the last twenty nine through thirty three is HVAC items. So instead of mumbling them together, we try to break them down so it's easier to see if we're doing a roof or we're doing a parking lot, where we're at in the budget line items and how far out we need to schedule those. So, uh, Sean will go through, if you guys don't mind, where we're at from twenty five and going into twenty six and see what line items need to stay or need to be changed.
And, and then, um, as we look at twenty five, we have that highlighted in that, uh, salmon color. Uh, we've highlighted some of the, in a deeper orange. Those are projects that we had anticipated trying to do in twenty five that we did not get accomplished. So like Mike said, we have our, uh, type of activities, one thirty three, thirty four and thirty five are debt payments. That also includes the morgue and then any anticipated debt we're taking on for the Hall of Justice. Um, on the lowest section of it, we have some anticipated cash flows for the years. And then I have a nice blue hold spot in there, just in case if there's any ARPA dollars returned, we'll gladly take any of those. Just tossing that out. So going through twenty six.
Your optimism.
Uh, you know, just want to have somewhere to spend it if it comes back. Uh, in twenty six, we are reducing our maintenance budget. That's that million dollars we talked about in REIT dollars previously from eight fifty five down to six eighty. We've removed our landscape, uh, reducing some of our HVAC preventative maintenance on there with the Hall of Justice coming online with the new system. We're expecting to see that drop off. In twenty seven, we're expecting to see some of the HVAC engineering support and the BASDDC support dropping off as well. Um, and then our preventive maintenance still coming down from there. You know, we're down to our filter changes and the rest of Aaron's crew's doing the rest of that. Uh, still maintaining our small projects, large projects, and then our contingency. the rest of Aaron's crew's doing the rest of that. Uh, still maintaining our small projects, large projects, and then our contingency funds, uh, to make sure our maintenance program's there. 10, 11, and 12, we have our, um, roof replacements on there. We expect the jail roof to last through 2028. You know, juvenile roof, we have issues there. We know it's an issue and we're expecting about $3 million to replace that in full plus with engineering included on that. Going from 13, 14, we're accomplished. We're not, excuse me, 13 was accomplished this year, 14. We, uh, did a little bit of drainage work out there. We didn't say we didn't do anything, but we didn't do the concrete. We fixed the drainage on annex and trying to make that a better area. And 15, the museum parking lot is, we're assuming about $200,000 on there to do a grind and repave. And we'll probably address some of the bushes and trees while we're over there. 17's, that's gonna be coming from the CTIP committee. We're gonna talk about that after this one. I think Savannah's got another presentation to run through there. Uh, we do, 17A is a new item on there. We have some rollover from, um, carpets that need to be done. But we strategically paused on some of that until the mill project's done in some areas, so we're not dirting up fresh carpets. Juvenile fire panels, what was another one here, line 19. We did see some significant increases from our estimates originally. The fire panel does need a full replacement and then some of the actual equipment in the areas are at end of life as well. Um, and so to accomplish that, we need to do a full replacement on that as well. Uh, and then we have future planning for fire panels at this building, uh, the jail. And then the sheriff's evidence storage, we got some quotes on that this year. It was a little bit above budget. We're still trying to work through that. We'll need to do some stormwater engineering on that, uh, but we've maintained it in there. And I remove, we talked about the facade. I'm just jumping down to 28. We have a three quarter mil, of a million dollar placeholder in here.
I'm just jumping in on that. We don't, as I talked to the board about a week or so ago, we just still don't have a hard number because we haven't done the investigative work on the inside and we won't have that done until after the budget's adopted. So if it's, of course, above or below that, we'll come back to the board and do the budget amendment process and then this would be revised. So still an opportunity to make changes, so you're aware.
But it is an unknown, but we want to make sure we have adequate placeholder in there so we can correct that issue. Uh, and then getting into the HVACs, we have a variety of HVACs throughout the years. Countywide, doing some controller placements to help with our semen system.
Again, sorry.
No, come ahead.
So to shed some light and insight on the semen system, you've probably heard about it. Um, you probably haven't heard great things about it. It's a proprietary system, meaning we can't use any outside vendors. There's no low bid opportunity. Um, we spent a lot of money on it, um, and we have a very antiquated system. So our largest system is of course the Hall of Justice. And we'll be, um, getting to more, uh, non proprietary systems so we can use whoever is able to work on it at low bid. Um, but also we're looking to do that for countywide. So semen still runs this building, the annex, public works, and a missing one. Jail.
Jail.
Jail. Um, so that's our goal, is to eventually cycle that out and get with a system that we can, um, run effectively, but also at a lower cost. So anyway, that's sheds a little bit of light on that. I think controls is a little misleading, but it will be cost saving and, and update our energy efficiency as well.
So item 33, the, the big one we're working on currently is the Hall of Justice, um, HVAC replacement project. 2025 is still looking on track. We might be a little bit more than 6.5 million and then the remainder in 2026. We do have debt scheduled in 2026 to finish the funding of that. And then with repayment over a six to, a three to six year period, depending on, um, how our interest rates perform locally. Uh, drawing your attention to the bottom of it though, we do have to look at what we have available. Uh, we do not have a positive cash balance at the end of five years. And you can tell from the, um, left hand side of the sheet, we have stripped this down from everything we want to do to what we need to do. And we need to, uh, make some decisions from there.
And it's, it's assuming that REIT revenue is gonna stay the same. That also considers general fund transfer of a million dollars stays the same over those five years. Even, even with that, it still shows close to a $2 million deficit in five years if we continue down with these projects listed here. As Sean mentioned, we kind, the, the top one through nine is what we really can control what we really need to have for maintenance wise in this, around the county here. That's why we got certain things like the landscape, got rid of it. But everything else we kind of whittled down as far as we could. The rest of these 10 through 33 are items that need to be done or are on the list that for discussion if they need to happen in the county.
What's the special value of a, of the arborist tree maintenance? Is there something there that I can't do with a tree saw?
Do you wanna answer that?
Sure. So around the Hall of Justice, we have some quite tall trees that we still need to, uh, address. You know, along First Avenue, we have some still the jail and juvenile areas. Once we get the high ones back under control, I think we can do most of that in-house for the lower tree work.
Good.
We don't tend to use an arborist unless we have to. Um, so it, it definitely is a budgeted cost just in case. But, um, we usually will only do it if, if we have to have a professional opinion or we don't have the capacity to do it ourselves, so.
Yeah, we trimmed the trees back near Hall of Justice, I think, three years ago. So then they start overgrowing again, especially on top of the roofs. And critters get on the roof easily that way, but also of course limbs and leaves, so.
Are these something, Mike, you, you need some decisions on some of this now, or, or are you just kinda?
Well, discussion, I mean, we can. I mean, next year, we still have a cash balance.
Yeah.
So it's just a question, really looking at, you know, take 25 off here. We put 25 on there just so you can see where we're at and what we did and a little history there. We could have put more years on there. But 26, like I said, one through nine is really stuff that these is, we, we whittled it down $170,000, what we currently have from 855 to 680. But the other ones are gonna be questions of, you know, we have juvenile next year at 1.7 million for the first sections of roof. Uh, parking lot at museum, um, CIP committee on number 17 there. Um, the fire panels, of course, are pretty important, but sheriff, sheriff evidence storage is a half a million dollars. Um, and the number 28 is probably gonna have to happen at this, at some point. We don't know if it's three quarters of a million or not, but you know, as you know, we now do some work on this facade here. And the, and number 33 is already working or already in progress. So there's really not a lot of spots to even have. There's only probably three or four items on here that even have discussions. The rest of them are what they have to be.
I think there's still question marks on juvenile. In fact, it was part of a discussion I had this afternoon with them is trying to come up with ideas what we can do with that. So that, I think that one probably is gonna remain open for a while.
The current facility, yeah. Yeah, because we have juvenile line 11, that's about 3 million, as Sean mentioned, for the roof, but down below on line 30, estimating 2.3 million. And then 900,000 the year before, two years prior for replacement and control. So about, what, six and a half million dollars? And our best guess on infrastructure at that facility.
Did I, did Judge Facit say that because of the size of our county, we have to have our own juvenile facility?
Yeah. Yeah, in counties, I think when they crossed over 50,000, they had to have the facilities. And we built one, well, every county did. But that was back when they had a lot of kids. We, and that was part of the conversation we had today. We don't have that anymore. And I understand the, the deal, but it, but I think some of the counties are starting to push and, and I know in my talks with, with legal is because of the fact that our building is in district repair and a low number of kids, it, it's felt that we would have some, um, ability to work a deal with another county to help with that. So it is whack, but there is, uh, I think a little bit of light there or a little bit of pressure to, to work with counties on that because of the fact you don't run the kids anymore. They run them through what they call the deterrent programs or whatever the name they wanna, instead of running them through jail.
Yeah, I don't know how much further out we can kick juvenile roof. Uh, Aaron, Aaron mentioned us today.
Before it comes in.
Yeah, they, they, he mentioned that we, we have weather guard under contract. Um, and had to call them in a day. We had some major leaks in different areas at that facility. So we're gonna have them go try to repair as much as they can, as many as they can, but it's, it's getting to the point where it needs to be fixed. Unfortunately, it's just not gonna be cheap.
You know, I, I'm not big in going with my handout, but my, this might be something we add to, at least make our legislatures aware of it, because they all get a certain amount of capital, stuff they can, they can do. I think, I, I was gonna ask him on the facade, but I may ask, we may consider and ask on, on the other two because it's gonna take us a while to figure any, anything else out.
There are other items too that aren't, and I don't mean to drill it in, but just for awareness, um, there is a current request we're working with juvenile and IT on for over, I think probably we're ballparking over a half a million dollars on their, um, security, infrastructure, door lock mechanisms, et cetera. That's not represented on here, um, that will be coming forward probably in the next couple of months. That, again, not, not on our list. It's, it is heavy IT, um, but still capital nonetheless.
What, on items 26 to 27, five years out, you're looking at monies for seismic upgrades. Are there, are there known issues that were somewhere we need to do and we're just putting it out till?
Every five year plan I've seen has had that on the fifth year.
Everyone.
Let's keep rolling it out.
It keeps getting rolled out.
It'll have a big sticker. Whenever, whenever we get that design in place, it'll have a very large sticker attached to it.
How soon do you think you'll have the, a, a ballpark figure for the facade repair?
I would say, uh, late December with the holidays, maybe, maybe mid to late. Um, because the work they won't, like I said, they, I think they're doing it that first weekend of December. The, the work itself on the inside of elections and then we'll have to wait for the report and.
Okay. But hopefully this year.
I mean, we might have a ballpark number this year, but, um, yeah, I hope so.
Okay.
And I can push.
So Sean, does, does this get, this gets approved the same time as the budget in December?
Yes, this will be one of the, the plans with our five year plans that will be approved on the, uh, budget package.
Uh, would it be beneficial for us to email this to you guys so you'll have it and you can look at? I mean, it's hard in this setting and, I mean, if you guys wanna continue to, did, did they already have it? Okay, awesome. And say we could, we come back every week. So if you would like us to make changes or if you have questions about specific line items or what have you, we can, we can adjust it before the budget. That's what I'm saying.
Can we approve something that we are knowingly negative in?
It's a plant?
It's a, yeah, it's, so the budget itself isn't negative, right? So if you're, you know, for 2026 and 27, we're not, we're not at a 1.9 million dollar negative. But if we continue with this forecast, it would be, but I don't know that we'll ever come and present a negative budget to you. But we do like to use this, there's forecasting, so you guys know kind of what the county is up against.
And then, you know, we can plan for debt or any other grants or that nature in the future.
Give me a segue to.
Sure.
Do you guys have any other questions of the five year plan or, okay. Um, so there is a line item on here that's the multi-year tenant improvement, uh, line item number 17. And, um, I had brought this to the board a couple of months back and, uh, you guys had made the decision to kind of wait till the budget process is in place. This is the same presentation. I just printed it off again. Um, and so what this is, is that committee, um, receives requests for tenant improvements for different departments. And the committee reviews them, scores them, and brings forward a list for the board to consider, uh, for the next budget year. And some of these projects that we've done, you just saw actually in this previous presentation just earlier, a lot of those courtroom eight courtroom, or excuse me, district court hallway. A lot of our projects are tenant improvements. So I see it as a warm fuzzy feeling of people having an opportunity to improve their space for safety, security, public, uh, customer support, uh, in any of those categories. And so we do open that up and these are the, totaling this year is 138,000. We'll round it up for, to 140. And, but there's several projects in here that are juvenile. Actually, a majority of them are juvenile. Um, that first one though is that jail medical. Oh, thank you. Um, I haven't used that yet. And so this one was our first ranking in priority. This is part of what we, um, consider to be part of that Medicare or Medicaid funding that the jail's looking to, to utilize. This will help them accomplish that. So that was ranked number one. Any questions on that? I'll just continue on. Okay. Uh, just a couple of pictures of current layout. Um, but some of these spaces will now be used as medical offices and storage. You can see on that next page, and I don't have numbers on this, start on it, slide four. This is the proposed layout, um, of what that area will look like and, um, the jail staff and, and leadership there is saying that this will work and, um, and help them cross that finish line for funding. It also just will work a lot better for how things are laid out functionally. Okay, so this next one is slide five and it's the jury office. Um, thank, thanks to the board, you guys approved us jumping on this so that we could make it work for the Millig project, so that we can use it as temporary hotel space. So not only that, they'll also be using it moving forward, um, as the jury office. And currently, if you see the office there, um, the public just like comes in there. Um, there's one person in this office. It's, it's in and out access. It gets really congested and loud. Um, and so what we're doing is adding a transaction window so that the public just can't come into the room. Uh, it's better accessibility. It kind of keeps people out of that office. Um, it's better safe. It's better and safer, um, I think for staff and the public. Oh, thank you. And the next one is just kind of a, a proposed layout that we had on that one. So we'll, oh. Um, so the next set of projects, um, are the juvenile projects that were proposed by, um, staff there at juvenile. So we've got the entrance, which includes repairing, um, that overhang. Gosh, what I'm, I'm vestibule atrium. That's it. It was right there. Um, it's leaking. It ruins the flooring in there. So, um, their first proposal was to replace the flooring and then, um, kind of asking those leading questions. It's because of water damage, because of a roof leak. So we actually added that onto the, their request, not wanting to, you know, replace the flooring if it was going to continue to get, um, damaged. So that one grew a little bit in scope, but it's likely for the best. So that one is about 33,000 to repair that atrium and, and replace the flooring. Um, we're looking at flooring that is still indoor outdoor or more outdoor leaning flooring in the event that, you know, for something, if there's water or debris that gets in there, it's easier to clean, lasts longer. Okay, uh, next one, that's ranked four on the list and it's a juvenile lobby courtroom flooring replacement. Um, their carpet is, is original. It's a very heavily used public space and it shows, um, it's, it's rippling up. It's worn in places. And, and it does need to be replaced. So that comes in at about 43,000. And the entire space will be, um, updated. So not just that lobby, but also that front entrance. And you can see on the left hand side, that's actually their courtroom in there. That'll also be replaced. It's the same carpet and quality. Okay. So the last one, and this is ranked number five, um, it's the juvenile shed rehab project. That is currently there, you know, it says right on there, their work crew shed. So the last one, and this is ranked number five, it's the juvenile shed rehab project. That is currently there, it says right on there, their work crew shed where their kids will come in and get their equipment and tools. They also store their lunches in there. It is in need of significant repairs. We'll be replacing some of the siding, replacing that front overhang, do some power washing. And essentially just rehabbing that to keep it going, keep it up. So that comes in at about 20,000. There are, if you see that picture on the right-hand side there, there are definitely some animals of some kind living there. So. All right. And then just this last slide, if we take off that HOJ jury office, which we did this year, actually is, I think, getting done very soon, the next couple of weeks or so, not sooner. The rest of these projects will need to be approved in the budget process by the board. And so it's that item one, three, four, and five. So gosh, public math, about 119? 118? 130? Oh, I was looking, oh, I'm sorry. I was, Sean, what's that number?
About 138,000. It's going to be line 17 on the five-year plan.
Be 135. So again, I mean, you, because this process doesn't necessarily have to be in the budget, the board can approve these now, or you can think it over and also just roll it in with the budget since they won't be for 2026 anyways. So.
They won't be for 2026?
They won't, sorry, they won't be until 2026. So we wouldn't start doing anything until then anyways. Yeah. So we would be working with a new budget either way.
Well, I, I think some of them, if we don't do something, they're going to end up costing us more money. We don't do something here quick, like the leaks.
So that's the end of our maintenance capital presentation. Once again, no decisions have to be made, but if you want to, we can add to our Wednesday agenda for next, next Wednesday at 1:30. And if, if you guys want to have more discussion on any of those five projects that Savannah mentioned, or any items that are on the five-year capital plan. We have more discussion before this gets finalized in the month of December.
So currently though, we have it down for, it was in this year's budget in 2025, correct?
For CIP?
These projects?
No. Nope. Only one of them was rolled forward, which was the jury office. The rest are all for 2026 proposed. And also we didn't really highlight this, but it is in that five-year plan. We have removed the CIP budget completely for the next three years because of budget constraints. So could be the last time, you know, that we, we evaluate, reevaluate this. Could be a couple of years.
That's too bad too. We just got the CIP team up and running again. And I think since COVID, it kind of went dormant. And we got it rolling and this year has great projects getting done in different areas and has some good proposals or some good proposals for 2026 and to have to shut it down again. But it's hard for us to justify, you know, 150, 250,000 dollars a year for possibly carpet or wallpaper removal down the road if we're actually looking at a 1.8 million, 9 million dollar deficit.
Just from a departmental standpoint, I think, you know, it is one of the programs that I value just because it kind of gives you more of a tangible impact to the public and to people working in their space because they have new carpet, you know, they see it. A roof is great, especially for us, but I think it's just like something people just think should work anyway. You know, they, they don't see it like, like we do. So yeah, hopefully we can keep it going in some capacity, but.
When you say that it's for the 2026 budget, that mean if we approved it now, you still wouldn't be able to start till 2026? Is that what you're telling us? That's what you're meaning by that?
Yes. So we would.
Except for the one, it's okay to keep it with the budget approval because you're not going to start on it until 2026. That's what I'm hearing, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. But I don't think anybody here has any heartburn with them. If you were starting early, I think they'd be okay. We'd be okay with moving early, but if it's, doesn't work that way, or it's not in the game plan, that's fine too.
Yeah, I guess that's the only one that made the most sense. Maybe starting earlier is the one that has the water issue at juvenile. If they're all going to get approved. Yeah.
Well, like I said, if, if we don't do something about it, it's going to end up costing us more money and we will eventually have to do something about it. It's, it, we're going to have to react to whatever.
Well, I, I would suggest if we're comfortable, let's just make a motion and approve it. And if they, if they find time and they get started early, that's great. If not, it's, it's going to be on the timeframe they had anyways.
I agree.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And I'm only saying this, I'm going to take that as an approval and we'll move forward, but I want you guys to know that we did evaluate it. I don't think that we would leave knowing that. We wouldn't just leave it be and have them do a CIP process if it wasn't something, like if we saw the immediate need that it was going to be long-term damage or really, we would just have to do it and come to the board and, you know, it's an emergency repair. So just so you guys know, because it's an outside inside area, I think it's been, it wasn't original to the plans. It was an add-on. It wasn't done correctly, but so hopefully I don't think we just ignored it and like let it, anyway, that was my only caveat.
I didn't think that.
Okay.
Well, I thought it, but only briefly.
As long as it was brief.
We're just trying to give you some flexibility.
Appreciate that.
Loosen up, then, then go for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Aaron Screw on them. Thank you.
Okay.
I believe Savannah has one miscellaneous item update for.
For Millig, yeah. So Millig project, it's not all rainbows and butterflies today, unfortunately, which is sad for me, but I did want to let the board know. I'll be sending out an email this afternoon that we are doing a schedule bump. Originally the zone 2D, which is the clerk's office space on the second floor, was supposed to be getting done November 10th or that week of. And we're pushing it to November 17th. They did fall behind. We had some pretty high profile, still have high-profile jury trials going on, three in a row. Which we, it prevented us from doing any work on some days. So that slowed us down. Millig's proposing that schedule bump, which I'm, I'm okay with. It'll actually help us do some hotel move-arounds and give us a little bit of time to do that. For the sheriff's office, which is our most probably diverse and as far as divisions go, and the most people will have to move. So anyway, so I'm okay with that. Hopefully the board's okay with that. I did give the green light. The other proposal that our teams met on quite a few times with Millig and amongst ourselves, they would like to change their schedule from a daytime shift to a swing style shift. Which would mean pushing their time, start time till 4:00 PM, mobilization, start work at 5:00 PM, which means they don't have any noise constraints. They don't have to be concerned and the courts don't have to be concerned with noise in their courtrooms or jury deliberations. And so this new schedule would be a swing shift schedule from Monday through Thursday. So again, after kind of mulling it around with our team, we do think it'll be beneficial and I think it will help us in potential future delays with, with some court stuff. So I do think it's a good move. Will it cause us a lot of headaches? Yes. But I do think also in talking to Milligan, just knowing kind of how the contractors are working in those contracts, we would have paid a lot of money upfront if we would have proposed a shift like this to begin with. And and I think we didn't want to try to do that with the constraints, but I think it ended up working out. Things happen for a reason. And I think because they're recognizing the lack of work they're going to be able to do, and they want to make money and time is money, that they're willing to do this schedule change without an added cost. So that was also a contributing factor to being okay with it. So I'm working with the courts, getting them feeling comfortable again, hopefully, on this new schedule.
What time will they be done?
1:00 or 2:00 AM.
And hopefully their cleanup is done because we're not going to be there.
That is correct. And that was a big point that we had in trying, in agreeing to this is ensuring a clean area at an 8:00 AM start time, which has been problematic a little bit.
So are they still going to stay on the same days? Are they going to move Monday to Friday?
Monday to Thursday.
Monday is Thursday.
And, but good question because that leads me to my next thing. We will be using Friday court for about another month here through December 1st. And then I'm going to keep it set up for another month, just to make sure that we're not sliding backwards and need to come use Friday court here at admin, you know, after we've dismantled everything. So we will not hopefully have to host court here after that January timeframe. So it will be up and ready to mobilize if we need to for, like I said, through December, but after that, the courts will be ready to go back to having court at the hall on Fridays.
So with this shift change, there is no work on Friday, Saturday or Sunday then?
Correct.
Unless they find themselves in trouble and need the extra time.
Correct. Which is why I'm giving it yet another month, just in case.
It's a good call.
Well, it seems like on the surface, when they're working and they, they got an empty building and you're not worried about noise, they should be able to move along a little. I mean, that would seem logical anyways.
And we tried to, in the beginning, we tried to do more of a night shift, but it was going to be so expensive. So we didn't pursue that, but now it's kind of worked out. So.
On them.
Yeah, okay.
So those are my updates. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we had, yeah, we have one more thing. We had Travis.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
We're moving to IT.
Before I proceed, can you hear me okay?
You're really quiet.
I can hardly hear you.
How about now? Any better?
Yes.
That's better.
Okay, great. So good afternoon. This is a last minute request. I'd like to request approval to proceed with Veronis. They proposed, they provided a contract for services for the next year, which is a SaaS service or a cloud-based service. We previously used this product over the past three years as a installable product on-prem. We operate it within the county. This is a move where we now move it to the cloud and we use their service-based product. We've historically paid 163,000 dollars for the software license and we've had additional expenses for servers that are now end of life. And they previously quoted us last year and was previously presented last year to move this to a cloud-based service. At that time, it was quoted to be over 200,000 dollars a year. This year, we've negotiated a significant discount. They've proposed a renewal for one year at 99,000 dollars for the next year with modest increases in following years. We would no longer need the additional hardware or the replacement of hardware that we have on-prem today. So this is a significant savings. It allows us to continue using the service with the existing features. And I guess I probably should have mentioned what the service does. So just so you understand that, generally speaking, Veronis helps us understand and protect our most sensitive data by showing exactly where critical information lives, who has access to it and how it's being used. So it can identify things like credit card numbers, social security numbers, that sort of thing, so that we can identify where critical or sensitive data lies. We didn't have a contract, customized contract with them in the past, or at least if we did, I couldn't locate it. So we've worked with legal and their, and their legal team to revise the contract. And so that's also being presented for signature.
So our legal team and their legal team came to an agreement?
Correct.
Okay.
Travis, is there any language in the contract? What is, what does modest mean? I mean, do we know what that is in the contract? Year one, this, two, three, four?
Yeah, it, it, it's not in the contract, but they've, they've communicated to me via email that it would be less than 10%. And so they estimated seven to 10%. If we want to sign a multi-year contract, we could probably do that also instead. But, and if we did that, we might be able to get that lower, but right now that's what they've provided to us. Because I'm not sure if we want to use the service in future years, because with additional time, we may look at competitors. I wasn't, I wasn't advocating or recommending signing a multi-year agreement at this time.
Okay. So it's provider we've been using, we're just using them in a different way at a lower cost. And everybody signed off on the contract.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm good with it.
Real quick, Travis, when you say we may not need to use them in the future, do, are we using them? Why are we using them now then? If there may not be a need for them in the future?
Yeah, we would, we would still want to have that functionality, but we may prefer a different vendor, a different product to do the same function. So at this point, because we already use them, because we didn't have time to evaluate alternatives, staying status quo is the right path forward. In the future, if we have time, time allows, competitors may want to bid and provide alternatives. We're not at the point now where we can reevaluate that.
Okay.
We'll satisfy with that. Okay. Good to go, Travis.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Oh, I, I, I met with Judge Evans and I forget the gentleman. He, he comes to us from Utah in juvenile. And I, I asked him, they were talking about, I'm just getting curious about the process. I think you guys have chatted with them a little bit and some of the state evaluations and how things are working. And I, I said, I would like you to send that data over to us to see. So we, so if you start seeing that data, that's, I requested that they start sending that, that to us. And so if we have questions on it, we can, we can chat with them and try to understand it. I'm trying to understand and it sounds like there is a little bit of leeway. One of the questions I had is do we have to do things the way state says it, or do we as a county have an ability to, like, I don't want to do things like King County because I think they probably have different needs than, than we do. And I think there is a little bit of leeway in there. But until we see the data and see what we're doing and, and what it's showing, if we're making progress or we're not, I think we could do a little adjustment, but I think we all need to see it before we can make that. So if you start seeing that, that's why.
That's good.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we will adjourn. Purvy, you did it. You made it through.